But I'm cool. You don't want me to sit here and shiver.
It is cool.
Okay, we're ready?
Yes.
Okay, I call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees. Trustees for the Town, Talahina Public Works Authority. I remember one of the agenda approved or rejected consent agenda consisting of minutes at the regular meeting held November 9th, 2015. Any discussion, questions about the agenda? About, sorry, about the minutes?
Which one we on, what minute?
9th. November 9th. Board of Trustees is time. This is the one you had comments on before?
No.
No?
No, well, I was commenting on this one. But, uh...
We're sure it was.
That's the second, no, this is the ninth. December 9th or November 9th?
November 9th.
November, November 9th.
Yeah, December 9th. Can't test that one. We have to come back and address that one. So that one was actually here, John?
Well, I didn't, I wasn't here, so it's...
Apparently, that other one, November or December 9th. Public Works, and that's what will be done next meeting.
Okay, so, Public Works, November 9th, 2015. I make a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Motion made by Mr. Sears, second by Ms. Bailey. Any other discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Yes. Item number two on the agenda, approve or reject consent agenda consisting of minutes of the emergency meeting held November 9th, 2015.
This is not gonna happen. And, and if you look at the video, it says it happened out there.
Let me get that fixed, will they?
Yeah. And, and if you want to, uh...
You want it on Monday's?
Please do it on Monday's.
If you see if I add a little bit on that, are you okay with that, Ron? Took no action due to the need for a reformation.
Okay, so we will go on. I remember the second number two, which should be number three, please. Approve or reject consent agenda consisting of minutes of the regular meeting held December 14th.
I'd like to add in there on, uh... Okay, we don't remember. John, can you give your favor next time, Parker? Uh, when you do the minutes, can you put the number on the, uh...
Sure.
Minutes, place it here, put the four bodies' number on the agenda. So I don't know which number I'm looking at, but I guess it's the...
Okay, you did it.
Cent, cent, cent three. Approve or check purchasing of water distribution stock replacement part. My actual motion was to, uh, purchase a 12-inch, uh, what's it called? 12-inch, uh...
I watched the video and nothing.
Repair sleeve.
The TV video, it was never...
That's in the amount of $700.
The motion actually said replacement parts, oh, it's, uh, that's wrong for the way I'm handling it.
But it was, it was the 12-inch?
I like these later.
Be specific.
Repair, was it repair sleeve or scope?
I don't really determine repair sleeve, Don.
No, that's what I'm asking, I don't know what it is exactly.
No, he said stock replacement, that's what he said, that's what it was called.
Okay, what would we buy?
Well, I didn't know what a stock replacement was, but it was a mystery part. And then I got my ask and he said stock.
Keith said it was stuff that they keep long stock, it goes it.
It's a 12-inch repair sleeve that they use out of the yard. And so, if I look at this month, or six months, I say, okay, what do we buy?
I'm going to work, 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 work on those.
And then, uh, on the next one, we approve the pump and the amount of pump to see what, if we have a price on that.
Long video.
I don't remember, if you looked at the video, we had the two bids in front of us, but I believe I put an amount in my motion.
And did we say who we bought from at that time? See, that's what I'm, and I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but it needs to be more than we know, know that we've done, of course, and you're talking now, but we asked you to do it here. And this has been three weeks, month, less than a month.
But if I went back and pulled my, my notes, I could have told you, but I didn't bring those with me.
Right, but...
It's probably second.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt, be more specific.
Yeah, obviously, we do that.
You might want to make it more specific in the...
And I'll agree with this now, but if we can, let us be a little bit more specific on that. So if we look back at it, what was that again? You know, some of us are getting old.
Just wanted to watch the video. The tape would have been helping me, so I just like to watch the video on YouTube.
And I didn't say what company it was and that.
I don't remember, you know, what I heard, so...
I don't have a videotape like in my hand, I don't have much of my own.
That would be so stressful.
What is that?
I just appreciate the tape being there, that saved me on, it saved me on the November meeting, because I wasn't here for it. So I just whipped my hat and listened to the whole thing, just like I had been there at the meeting and took notes.
I know, my kid wasn't saying that, but if I did. Yes, we're making those motions, please speak up and let us know when you know to make them. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I made a motion, pretty has it, but in the future can be number in correlation with the agenda. Now, let's be a little more specific on actually what we did there.
So we have a motion to approve of Mr. Popper. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Bailey. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Right.
Yes.
Don? Yes.
Ron?
Yes. Thank you. Item number three, public forum, is everybody here for public forum for the Talahina Public Works Authority? Okay, we'll go on then. Discussion on item number four, discussion on action regarding amendment of budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Would you like to discuss this one?
We need to look at the board busting that, sure.
Off supply postage for the de-vibration postage. She goes...
Well, you're looking at the current actual, not the proposed, any...
Right, I'm looking at what we have spent today, what is, what we have. We have not invested it so far. She has asked for an increase. Professional services, now that we have an attorney, we got in there about a bit for the fiscal year.
But you're looking at, there's so many busts, or the, there's numbers, not showing that for busting. You have to look at the, none of these statements.
Tony, what we spent today.
No, I feel like you have to look at the, uh, statement of revenue expenses to get the actual.
Well, no, I didn't have time to think that, we were checking that, and that's just...
Okay, so, I say somebody's done, yeah.
And let me also add on that proposal that you're looking at.
Mar, who's come up with this, or are there some things that we're busting that we need to come up and help us with this, please?
And also, uh... Keep in mind that on that proposal, again, because that one was from last month, one thing that does not reflect that you guys have already changed is, um, let's see, where's your proposal, you shared one? Okay, you guys already actually changed this water sales number. You bumped that up by five, so that you could accommodate the five on chemicals, so that...
And we took 5,000 out of, uh, the general revenue to put into the operating supplies.
Right, and, right.
Yeah, we did, we did up water sales.
That was the way that the motion, okay, well, I guess I completely misunderstood what I was advised to do.
Right.
Okay, what did you want me to do?
We voted to take 5,000 from revenue fund to put into operating supplies.
Listen, that is where it's paid from, but it's a difference in an expense account.
But it's not raising, this number is taking the money we have here available and putting it here.
Okay, so you just want, if I, that's going to put you in a deficit on your bottom line, okay? Because right now, with your budget, your bottom line, with your pre-budget, is less than 5,000, okay? Yes, the cash is there, right? It's an asset account. But if you ask me to increase, like you did, the expense account by 5,000, that comes off the bottom line of the budget. So even though the cash was available, because we could see the revenues in other areas, you see, it's going to put you in a deficit on your budget. So when we had the discussion, I said to you guys, you have to have something to offset that too. And the discussion was, of course, we pay it from revenue fund, because that's where we paid the gas, but that we would bump up the water sales by five to offset the five in the expense, and then the net effect would be zero.
No, I'd like to get some clarification.
On the budget? Just on the budget?
Right, right.
Well, that's not the way I stood it.
I just thought we were...
And I, and I need to get some clarification on that.
I thought we were just paying five thousand, and then...
Yeah, because, uh...
That's what I thought. Did you understand?
So you're, so you're saying basically that we can't take any of this money here, because it's not in the budget?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Unless we vote to move it into the budget.
You're, you're not required on public works.
Let's not even bank the margin, that would be not right. But here's the thing, Johnny, listen, we're confusing expense accounts with asset accounts, okay? We're using the bank to pay absolutely, that's where it has to come from, honey. Though we didn't have enough allocated in the expense account. You guys wanted to bump that up by five, no problem. But when you increase your expenses by 5,000, that comes off your bottom line. Your bottom line on your approved budget was less than 5,000. That would have made you a negative approved budget. So then I came up here and said to you guys, wait a minute, where's it going to come from? We're like, yeah, 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 that's where it's paid from. But where are you going to accommodate it on the budget, your revenue and expense accounts? And that's when I said, listen, we're going to have more than a 5,000 and increase the water sales. Let's offset it there. Yes, that's what we did. However, if that was misleading or misunderstood...
That's all right, no.
I mean, maybe you should...
I understand what you're saying.
Right, and you all can change it at the next one.
Right, but to me, when I look at, at this figure, it's not from, uh...
Oh, did y'all just turn the heat on?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize, I'm... Got it.
Uh, when I look at the 8,900 revenue fund, that's not for water sales, that's from all these combined.
It's for a net, and that's the whole issue of the net.
And that's what I'm saying, how can you do one of these items to reflect this when it's all of them together?
Again, we're mixing asset accounts with revenue and expense accounts, it's two different discussions, okay?
But this is an asset account.
Let me show it to you this way. Let me see if I can make it make a little bit more, so if you can see it, okay? Because here, let me see, I can't read that side yet. Okay. Oh, you know, where's your proposal? Oh, actually, you know what, I'm on this alert, I apologize, because this is reflecting that. Okay, okay. So, right here, your bottom line is 4,700, okay? Now, this already reflects the five and five, but let's say it didn't. If you guys pay me some revenue, you know, the $10 for chemicals, and I say, okay, well now, your budget bottom line is going to be in negative 53, so where are you going to get it from? And when we were having that discussion, I said, why don't you offset it to water sales, because we're going to exceed our professional water sales. Right, and listen, Bonnie, the reason that says amended is because that change is already on there. Originally, your budget was 660. We bumped it to 660.
Then you got a little freaked out, you got ahead of that.
Okay, well, you guys can vote on that too.
When we were done.
Okay, well, then maybe I didn't understand that part.
Yeah, we were a bit freaked out, that's the minutes, that's...
Okay.
So you need to raise...
I just, I just need you guys to instruct me, because maybe, I've not seen the minutes, maybe I didn't understand. Or I have taken, that's what I should say, that, or this, would you ask me? Okay, let me see. Okay, this is not him, or... Oh, okay, it's 3,300 from the public. But see, here, okay, here again, a revenue fund is an asset account, and let, let me just go back, okay? That one is on me, because, you know, nobody's read that meeting. And I put an email out and said, you guys were writing, and nobody answered me.
I think I remember that email.
Yeah, so I, I never got clarification. And we ended up having a discussion later that made me think, oh, they meant something else. So if in fact that's what we're, I was supposed to do, then I'll add that 33 there, I'll get you guys prepared for reports. And your bottom line, you know, your budget, that you amended is 14, 1,400. So I'll get you guys, and you send December reports for that, okay? Okay, very good, I'll take care of that.
Thanks.
Let me grab my red pen and I'll come back out and visit with y'all.
I, I have a couple of questions, whatever y'all get to a point.
All right.
It's on the, on the first page right here, um, on revenues.
Can I, I just want to make sure I know what you're looking at.
Okay, just on the front page.
Sure.
It's going to be on the sewer tap, internet fees.
Sure, yeah.
And then I also have one about the $22,000 in penalties.
Okay, sure.
And, and so, I was wondering, on the water tap fees and sewer taps, there's zero in the budget for that. Do we not think that we're going to get any new sewer taps, or...
You know what, honestly, there was no way. We historically have very few new connections. And so based on that, at the time that I proposed a budget to them, that they approved, the position I took on it was conservative, like, I can't count on this. So I'm not going to budget anything for it, if we're great, if we get it, but I just, I couldn't count it, because we may get one or two a year at most. It's just not something we do a lot of, because our, you know, our town's pretty much already established.
Okay.
You know?
And then the last one was on the $22,000 in penalties. Um, I think it's like old people on fixed income, social security, and just other people that can't afford the high rate, higher rates that happen today. And so I was just wondering about the $22,000.
Sure.
That seems high for me.
Okay, and let me put it to you like this, and this is just my opinion, so I'm going to say that we're working here, and that way, if they have a different opinion, then they can offer theirs, okay? When it comes to a water utility, like, I totally understand where you're coming from, okay? When it comes to a water utility, that's different than the town of Talahina. One of those distinctions is that a utility is called an enterprise fund. What is an enterprise fund? That means we have a product or a service to sell, and we should cash flow. Whereas with a town, we're largely counting on tax revenues to pay our expenses, right? With a utility, we should be able to cash flow the bottom line based on selling our products or service. It's an enterprise fund. Having said that, it's run like a business, okay? Now, what we have is a situation in this office where we just weren't having enforcement of that, okay? And so when I stepped in a year and a half ago, or actually, I even started on it for that, said, we've got to start enforcing this, and there was some heartburn with the customers, because, like you're saying, if, if they only get their checks on the 23rd, but the bill was due on the 10th, what do you do? Totally understand. So basically, what we had to do was counsel them at that point, as I've done in other utilities where I worked, and said, listen, we actually have your readings available very early. When you get your check, okay, then, or check, your, your direct deposit, you can call us, and even though you don't have the bill yet, we know what it's going to be. We can tell you. Now, what, that means is, they're going to have to double up on that. But the fact of the matter is, it's my opinion with an enterprise fund, we're not in a position of maybe subsidizing or making allowances, because some people manage their finances differently. Because in fact, we do have, our senior citizens are our best paying customers, and they're doing exactly what I said, they're the first ones through the door. You know, it's not like we change due dates or anything.
And so, so your estimate is 20, we should have about $22,000 in...
Right, and, sure.
In penalties, just, just...
And it's not because I want to have $22,000, I hope we could have none, because see, we have to mail shut-off notices, we have to post the penalties. It's additional labor on our part, as well as additional product in the form of paper, postage, and envelopes. But, um, you know, I think if you, if you had a list of all of our late customers and you interviewed them, I think...
I saw the checks at Campbell's of people that didn't.
I think a good number of the people would tell you, oh, that's just when I pay it. You know, a lot of our customers are people of needs that just don't even pay until they know it's going to be shut off. It's personal spending habits, I think, more than necessarily need-based, in most cases.
Okay.
I can attest personally, but it's usually if they are late on their water bill, they're the ones having their cell phone bills, their cell phone cut off too, because they're late. They have this habit of having late.
Well, there's not a lot of jobs that will pay them.
But even when they have, well, even when they have a job, it seems to be that there's a certain set of people that are just not good money managers, and until it's shut off, it's not a priority to them.
Well, is this a...
Does she have a way of approaching them, uh, knowing the difference?
I mean, I can say...
You know what I'm saying?
Sure, I totally understand what you're saying. And, and like, when I was talking about that period, even before the prior utility perk left, and I kind of came in, let's be honest, to clean up a mess, right? We start one mess at a time. One of the things that I noticed very quickly was, our due date's the 10th, but sometimes we don't post those penalties until the 16th. And then I would realize, from the 10th to the 16th, we got $16,000 worth of payments, so I'm doing some math, we just lost out on $1,600 in that, right? And so when I made that change, we did have people surprised, because frankly, they didn't know when their penalties were going to be assessed, because this office wasn't rent property, okay? That's on us. But the thing about it is, as we made those changes on enforcement of penalty dates, as well as enforcement of shut-off dates, we did spend a lot of time talking to customers. And I have had, like, I have one gentleman specifically who fits the profile that you're talking about. He, um, is on government assistance, and it comes in at a time that is just really not conducive to his paying on time or early, even though my argument is, well, why don't you double up? Maybe that's not possible for him. And this kind of goes to what Ron is saying, because I've had extensive discussions with this gentleman. And this gentleman will say to me, well, you know, my kids blah, blah, and their car, you know what I'm saying? Like, everything is coming before the water bill, because we're the ones who are going to lend it, right? So to me, again, it's a matter of personal spending habits. And the thing about it is, it's a 10% penalty. If somebody keeps their current, you know, most people's water bill is 60 bucks, so we're talking $6 there, right? And it's a good deterrent too, for people to get their money in on time, because we have to pay our bills on time, you know?
And it's a standard, I mean, we're not being the babies and everybody else.
Right.
It would just not lie member for me.
Right.
It would surprise me.
I think it's because we are lower end time areas.
Yeah.
And a lot of people, and I, I've just seen this over and over and over, and people that I know well will say, oh, my phone got shut off again. I go, doesn't that cost you $25 extra? Oh, yeah.
But let me also say that on that...
They have the money, because they said, well, we went to Hot Springs this weekend.
Right, and let me...
It got cut off.
Let me add to that point that they'll have the iPhone with the cover and the bling, that their water's getting shut off, so do you need water, do you need a cell phone? So many of these things are personal decisions. We do have someone who comes in who truly is need-based. Because we are an enterprise fund, because John and I have to work out the policy procedures put forth this, uh, this town, so I have to treat you like I treat you, like I treat you. We do have some entities that we can refer them to for help. We just can't be the ones that bear that burden of that.
Right, that would be, actually.
Well, that's, that's basically what I was asking, that actually answers.
Yeah, okay, good. I just took the picture and get there. But we do counsel them on those things, absolutely. You know, and listen, you guys, I'm sympathetic to it, I understand, I pay bills too. And so it's not like, I, I know sometimes it's perceived as this very rigid thing. Here's the way I always explain it to, to people. If it was Mary Water Utilities, girl, I'd let you slide. But this is taxpayer money, and so I'm not at liberty to do that. It's just, it's not my place to make that discussion.
It just, in the last seven years, we've had so much of an increase.
Oh, sure.
And then we've also seen so much other stuff going on, and so...
Yeah, it's shocking. And let me make a point of that, and then I'll get off my sub-boss. But what happened in this town is what you see happening in towns all over the country, okay? Because let's be honest, a lot of this stuff at the end of the day is political, and these are elected positions. I'm not pointing my finger at these guys, as I am in general, and not even their predecessors in general. Raising rates is never a popular thing to do. Nobody wants to do it whether they're up for reelection or not, because that's when it becomes a hard part of the United City Council. So what you see is for years, decades, whatever, you see these towns that are actually selling the water for less than it takes them to produce it, okay? That's what happened here. And the reason they raised the rates, even though it should have been done incrementally for decades, was the people who actually are in the business of this, USDA World Development, came in into these cost studies and said, we can't help you with a water plant unless you correct your rate structure. So what feels like a big jump is actually kind of a punishment for the fact that it shouldn't have been done incrementally through years. What, yeah.
Yeah, it, it also goes with that we still have huge transfers, even though you, I see you...
Oh, right, 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 subsidizing.
Right, so we're also having to subsidize the town.
That's a very good point. And listen, that happens in almost every town too, because the utility does have a product to sell. Versus the town, you don't feel like you have a ton of control when that sales tax check comes, or like, what's it going to be? You know, if we were to give the entire town a face lift right now, how long would it be before we actually saw the benefits of that in sales tax versus a water rate increase? Quick and easy and dirty way to do it comparatively. See what I'm saying? So you're right, because utility takes the hit for the town, actually.
All right, so, the original question over, or any areas that we were busting through that we need to give change for tonight for the budget?
Very, how many of the, you know, next, when we did the 3,300 in the minutes on the...
Sure, right, right.
You said we need to add two.
I will.
What that, what that would do is change this bottom line to basically 8,000, right?
No, because you're increasing your expenses by 3,300, it's going to change it to 1,400.
Okay, how, how to reduce it?
Because you're adding to your expenses, no, you're adding to your expenses.
Yeah, it's your expense line.
We're not adding the revenues.
So that's telling me, what, when I look at this number right now?
That's telling you, right now, this is the number without the 3,300, if you're going to...
I mean, what is this number, actually, when I look at this? How much do we have left?
No, it's what you have budgeted for your bottom line.
I have 4,700 left, yeah.
At the end of the year, that's what was budgeted. And so I'm saying, when you guys, uh, increase the 3,300 that didn't make it on this statement, because we're only increasing the expense side and not accommodating it anywhere in revenues or by reducing another expense...
But wouldn't it say the same?
No. I can show you real quick why.
Because when we came, when we raised this at 0,000...
No, 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 that's, no, that's what we just argued about, the, the fact that you guys didn't do it that way.
Because this is the revenue side.
Because I wasn't in the, revenues and assets, right?
And this is the spend, it's venture side.
Right, but here's the thing, Johnny, if you look back at those minutes, you just said, we're going to increase the operating supplies by 3,300 out of a revenue fund, which is different than a revenue, okay? So you increased your expense, but you guys didn't increase the, the revenue. The only reason it happened the second time is because I was here that night, I was going, hey, hey, hey. You see what I'm saying? And so if you want to do the math of it, um, basically what's going to happen is none of your changes, this is not your bank account, it's a revenue, so it's called revenue fund, okay? So what you've done is now, this is going to be 783, and so now my expenses, my total expenses are up by 33, right? And so that's a negative, expenses money out, so now our bottom line's going to be...
But, but, but where do you subtract these numbers from?
Your revenues.
Okay, so we, we basically raised the revenue, that doesn't affect them here, because it's above the on...
Oh, you did know, Don, do you want to look at the minutes, do you want me?
The thing is, is we didn't vote to take it out of water sales. We voted to take it out of the revenue that's counted here.
Which is an asset, and an asset does not appear on a budget, okay?
But you're voting in here, and we voted to do it, you're going to add that in here, right?
Well, that's the problem, y'all didn't vote to do it.
Okay.
Therefore, that's why the bottom line changes. That's why when I was here the next month, and we decided y'all needed to add five, I was like, where's it going to come from? Y'all didn't figure out where it's coming from.
So you won't be adding it back in the year.
You will, no, not on the 33 one, right, that's why the bottom line's...
That's where I'm getting confused with the discussion.
Okay, okay, I understand. All right. Go back to my original question.
I'm, I'm with you, sister. I'm trying to get to there.
Okay.
Page 11, sex, repairs, and what I said that we need to...
Okay, did you already cover on page three?
No.
Get us back up to page three, please, and stay together, Chris. This, I'm... I'm sorry? Hello, page three.
Page three.
Of December financials. You guys will want to know what you had already busted on, and that's what you've got in front of you, so go to page three. And you're using the December one? I am. Um, okay, so the top line certifications and licenses, you busted on that one, because we actually have one more license, um, paid out, this is an annual deal. We're not going to keep having licenses through the year, but somebody got a license and I didn't plan ahead for it. So that one is busted, two more down, operating supplies, we're all too familiar with that. This one actually won't be busted, because that doesn't reflect the 3,300 that you haven't been, or you're going to get a corrected December financial in the morning. Okay, moving on to... That's all we busted on.
I think we left here.
Mm-hmm, that's it.
I think we did pretty well here.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Who cares?
I thought we could get our customer that one.
Well, no, but what I'm, what I'm telling you guys, you know, I'm working on my budget amendment proposal, and the, which, which is not what we're talking about right now, but I'm planning ahead on what Keith has got going on, right? And so what I think is really going to make sense for us to do, um, the December financial is great to look at, but you're going to have even more information tomorrow, because now you're going to know when the purchase orders are up for approval. And so you're going to start to get a picture of what your January's going to be like. And that information is actually going to be contained on the purchase orders now, I'm working on some formatting for you guys. And so that's going to give you even more current information. And my deal is, once we see what that's going to be on those... And that information is actually going to be contained on the purchase orders now, I'm working on some reformatting for you guys, and so that's going to give you even more current information, and my deal is, once we see when that's going to be on those purchase orders, I'm sitting here going, okay, I know Keith is already needing this for this other pump, and y'all, y'all. So I have ten to come to y'all hat in hand, and I'm kind of backing him up and saying, look, we got another listation pump that needs repair, I originally said, you know, can we bump that up to ten, we really need to make it like twenty. In my, so it.
It sounds to me the best thing to do is to hold off on approving this, and let us do this, these other.
The other decisions. Right, and, and again, you guys will have that on the purchase orders, so here's the thing to remember to you just real quick, and then I'll shut you, but you guys, what I always try to do is, no, what I always do is I have the purchase orders ready for you private to look at, and I email you the lists of them, and then they're available here for review with the invoices, which typically. Okay, which typically isn't until late in the day, but, um, the only thing that's going to be a problem is, what comes in the email doesn't list the details, so it's really, it's not even possible, so it's really going to be good if you can look at it in the hand. It may take me a little bit longer tomorrow, because I've got to do all that reformatting, they will be done before I leave tomorrow, so I'm just saying that, and I apologize in advance, but it may be something you want to plan for Monday morning, too. Okay, but you'll get an email as soon as they're done. Yes, 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 yes.
All right, we'll make that action number four. Ida number five, board member comments? Any board member comments?
Uh, did you want, he's gone.
Oh, he was outside, yeah, he didn't look.
He was asking a question earlier.
Yeah, he was asking a question about that, yeah.
I guess I need to wait for the adjournment quick on the town, though.
Okay.
No action on number, or comments on number five, number six, make a motion to adjourn. Sears makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Bailey, any other discussion? Vote.
Right. John?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
I should have asked you on the town, when we were looking at the, uh. Cemetery.
Are we looking at December financial? Okay, and keep in mind, I'm presenting those to you when I.
On the leaf right here, and he said, because I'm a leafing.